Mr. Sergeant at Arms, will you please call our April 11th, 2023 council meeting to order?
Yes, sir. Yes, I'm in time for the three events. Get back all the orders for the train that can be to Germany. All rise, please.
I would like to recognize our Chaplain of the Day, Reverend Clifford Ballinger, Senior Pastor of St. Luke Lutheran Church, invited by Councilwoman Logan. The prayer will immediately be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Ballinger, please lead us in prayer.
That is prayer with boldness. Mighty and merciful God, lover of justice and equity, you call us to support the weak, to help those who suffer, and to honor all people. By the power of the Holy Spirit, make us advocates of your justice today. Justice on this day, or justice delayed, is to all whom justice denied. We cry out for justice, justice for the death of powdering nickels, justice for victims of sexual abuse, justice for victims of domestic violence. We pray for protection for the vulnerable, protection for the abused, courage to the fearful, strength to parents and caregivers. Purge the privilege of their sense of superiority, and help us build communities of equity and diversity. We pray for our city council, and pray for all who serve in local city government. Give them a voice that seeks a common good for our community. We pray for meaningful police reforms in our city. We pray that the people will be heard this day. We pray for courage to address real problems with real solutions. We pray that we never have to bury the innocent victim of police violence ever again in our city of the past. We pray for fair wages, public education, accessible health care, and compassionate elder care. Pray for juvenile justice reform, living wages for our workers, and family leave from times of crisis. We pray for wisdom, discernment. We pray for action. We pray in particular for our home, our community here in Memphis, Tennessee. We give thanks for clean water, a deep aquifer, and a mighty river. Help us to be good stewards of these good gifts of creation. We pray for Memphis, that Memphis may be a city of safety, a city of peace, a city where all are welcome, a safe place where all can live out their diversity without fear. Pray all these things, and the one who created it all, and saw that we would have a good community, love one another, and love our God the Creator.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Logan.
I don't want to know too much.
Pastor, not yet. Okay, you should be on that.
Mic check. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And I'd just like to, um, come on up, please. Just like to thank Reverend Ballinger for his willingness to be involved in the community always. He's never closed his doors on the community. He's always been, from voting booth to community meetings, always been active in the community. And we thank God for a public servant such as himself being available to the community. And I'd just like to read this for your hearing. "By the City Council, greetings. Be it there hereby known that Reverend Clifford A. Ballinger is recognition of a life of exemplary qualities, outstanding service to the city, meritorious involvement in humanitarian affairs, and demonstrated concern for governmental process, has been appointed Chaplain of the Day of the Memphis City Council and is hereby entitled to all of the honors, rights, privileges, and prerogatives appertaining to the office and to the display of this certificate given under this seal this 11th day of April 2023. Martavis Jones, Chairman, presented by Rondaloga, Member of City Council. And again, we so appreciate you and have a thank you for you. Thank you."
Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Ms... Councilmembers Canaly, Carlisle. Call that. Easter Thomas, Ford, Johnson. Logan, Morgan, Robinson. Vice Chairman Smiley. Swerengen Washington.
President.
Warren.
President.
Chairman Jones.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I believe Vice Chair Smiley has read the minutes from our March 21st meeting. Okay, electronically, please. That item has been moved and seconded. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Welcome to the April 11th, 2023 regular meeting of the Memphis City Council. Comment cards are available for members of the public wishing to be heard on a specific item. Our Sergeant at Arms has agendas available upfront. Please be mindful that all cards must be completed in their entirety, including the item number you wish to speak on. Cards that do not include an item number or are left blank will be held until the end of the meeting for the general comments section. All those wishing to speak on an item must turn in their comment card to the Sergeant at Arms before the item is to the Sergeant at Arms before the item is called. As Chair, I will only recognize citizens that properly register to speak by submitting a completed comment card to the Sergeant at Arms. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. Chairman should have the authority to terminate the remarks to any of, of any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to council rules. On the left-hand side of the chamber, there is a monitor that will be displaying the YouTube livestream of our meeting with closed captioning. Please be advised that there is a 30 to 40-second delay, but is available for viewing for members of the public in need. Madam Comptroller, item number eight has been held for two weeks on the agenda. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is a resolution honoring Jasmine Carson for exhibiting excellence in basketball. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington.
Councilwoman Swearengen Washington. Eight, yes, eight.
Come on down, Glamaw. We are so excited to make this presentation on behalf of your beautiful granddaughter Jasmine. Whereas when worthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council has seen fit to honor and recognize individuals who have been demonstrating in dedication excellence in the community. Whereas Jasmine Carson was born July 14th, 2000, to Brian and Felicia Carson, and has demonstrated exceptional skill, leadership, dedication, and athletic prowess. Jasmine played two seasons at Memphis Central, where as a sophomore, she and her team competed in a district championship, after which she transferred to Whitehaven High School, but ultimately concluded her high school basketball career at McEaren in Powder Springs, Georgia, while there she averaged 17 points and three steals per game as a senior and was named All-District All-Four Years of her high school tenure. Whereas from 2018 to 2020, Jasmine Carson further showcased her talent and love for the sport by playing basketball at Georgia Tech. As a freshman, Jasmine was a dominant force on the court, playing in a total of 22 games. During her sophomore season at Georgia Tech, Jasmine averaged 9.7 points and 3.2 rebounds per game. She also scored in double figures in 15 games, including a stretch of eight straight games accumulating over 20 points three times. In 2020, she transferred to West Virginia to play for the Mountaineers into 2022. Whereas a sophomore, Jasmine Carson continued to exhibit remarkable skill in sportsmanship as she led the team in scoring rebounds and assists. She actively played in 31 contests, earning the start, and six shot 45.9% from the field. Whereas Jasmine Carson has been recognized with numerous accolades, including being the recipient of the 2018 Naismith High School Honorable Mention, being labeled with Adidas All-American, and being named a AAA All-Region Player of the Year in 2018. Jasmine Carson entered the transfer portal in January 2022 and ultimately decided to join the LSU Women's Basketball Team as a transfer from West Virginia. Under Coach Kim Mulkey's leadership, Jasmine has started in 30 games this season and is performing at the top three-point shooting player. During the February 19, 2023 LSU Women's Tigers versus Florida Gators game, Jasmine shot her career high of 25 points. She successfully scored seven three-pointers, the most scored by an LSU player since Pietra Gay, who has also had seven in 1997. Whereas the highlight of Jasmine Carson's basketball occurred Sunday, April 2nd, where she and her LSU teammates passionately and ardently played and won the 2023 NCAA Championship. This game not only took place on what has referred to as the biggest stage possible for women's basketball, but this momentous victory was the LSU Women's Basketball Team's first NCAA win in program history. In her final year of eligibility with the Tigers, Jasmine patently demonstrated resilience and resilience leadership and dedication to her sport and team, leading LSU in the championship game with 22 points, most of which occurred in the first half with a three-point barrage. She attained all five of her three-point shots in the half, including a bank shot at the halftime buzzer. Also, in her perfect first half, Jasmine flawlessly executed all seven of her shots in one of the two-three free throws. As a result in her incomparable aptitude, Jasmine was named the NCAA Championships Game All-Tournament Team. Whereas Jasmine not only displays vigor and industrierness on the court, inspiring teammates and others around her to always put forth their best effort, she imparts that same devotion in her contributions to the betterment of society. This is illustrated through her volunteer work, which consists of working for Habitat for Humanity during the summer to to build affordable housing in underserved communities, reading to the youth internationally in Mexico, Hawaii, and Jamaica, visiting senior citizens in assisted living facilities, donating school supplies and bikes to elementary students, and hosting free basketball camps. Now therefore, Glamaw, be it resolved that the Memphis City Council honors those whose contributions exemplify the excellence that our community strives for, and we now seek to honor Jasmine Carson and wish her continued success in her life's pursuits. The vast success of Jasmine Carson undisputedly serves as a source of pride and inspiration for the citizens of Memphis as well as the fellow enthusiasts of the sport. We are eager to see that this standout athlete and your granddaughter will accomplish in the future both on and off the court, and we implore citizens of Memphis to emulate the same dynamism and exuberance in their respective endeavors, giving on our hand under the great seal of the city of Memphis this 11th day of 2023. Jana Swearengen Washington, City Council, District Four. Martavis Jones, our chairperson, is also going to co-sponsor this resolution, and we are just tremendously proud of Jasmine. You have done an outstanding job.
I just want to thank you all for honoring and recognizing Jasmine. She's played ever since she was a little girl. She achieved her dreams to play under Coach Mulkey, to play in the NCAA. And she couldn't be here today. She wanted to be here, but she's had to get back to LSU. She's still a student. But anyway, I thank each of you all for this honor. Thank you so much.
And I so move.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. And Madam Comptroller, will you please show that this item has been approved by acclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Comptroller, uh, Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number two?
Item number two is a resolution to honor Dr. Derek Payne for his dedication and extraordinary service to the community. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington.
Councilwoman Swearengen Washington.
All right, we need Dr. Payne and his team to come and join us at the podium. Come on, everybody. It is an honor to be able to salute Dr. Derek Payne with all of the effort that he has done in the community, continues to do, not only as an outstanding dentist, but also a community advocate. Whereas when worthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council has seen fit to honor and recognize individuals that have demonstrated dedication to the betterment of others and the service to the community. Whereas Dr. Derek Payne is a native Memphian who is raised by his mother Patricia English, grandmother Carrie Benson, and father Gregory Payne. Dr. Derek Payne was a former student athlete of Hamilton High School and was awarded a football scholarship to attend Vanderbilt University, where he received a Bachelor of Science degree. Whereas Dr. Derek Payne, a vital and esteemed member of our community, tirelessly worked and purchased his first dental practice in Memphis, practicing in the Whitehaven community for 20 years, and has provided exceptional dental services to patients of all ages with the utmost care. He has made it his mission to exhibit professionalism, compassion, and precision in his work, and to steadfastly utilize his extensive knowledge and expertise in the field of dentistry to serve the citizens of Memphis. Whereas Dr. Derek Payne, numerous career accolades aside, has also demonstrated an unwavering commitment to give back to the community as it demonstrated by the membership in Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, his establishment of Men of Memphis United, the founder of 901 Live, a live music series at the Holleran Center, which recognizes talented musicians in Memphis, and the founder of the Roosevelt Hancock Scholarship Foundation, instituted on behalf of Dr. Payne's high school football coach, in which fellow graduates helped to fund the foundation which supports the scholarship awards designated for current students. Dr. Payne co-founded Her Prom Closet with Davina Jones, which provides prom dresses to young ladies located in Memphis, Nashville, Jackson, and also co-founded Determined to Be a Doctor Someday with Dr. Christina Rosenthal, which serves to encourage young teens to pursue careers within the medical field. Whereas it shall be noted that Dr. Derek Payne is also a dedicated member of New Direction Christian Church, the founder of the Alex L. Turner Scholarship Foundation, and co-author of the motivational book Forty Days of Direction: Life's Lessons from the Talented Ten. Dr. Derek Payne also strives to uplift unity within the community by hosting numerous community events, including that Jingle Jam event in which thousands of Memphians and those in surrounding cities come together to celebrate the Christmas holiday. Whereas many accomplishments of Dr. Derek Payne are in no part accidental as he has consistently showcased his excellence in word and deed by mentoring others and serving and improving the community through hard work, through intelligence, persistence, compassion, and diligence throughout the lifetime. Now therefore, be it resolved that mere words are insufficient to articulate Dr. Derek Payne and the fullness of his enduring legacy for outstanding service as a dentist and contributor to our community. The Memphis City Council honors those who efforts reflect our community's best qualities and who have used their platforms to make contributions that improve the quality of life through service and initiatives within the Memphis community. As Dr. Payne, thus we entreat citizens of Memphis to mirror the same incompassionable dedication to serve and lead given by my hand under the great seal of the city of Memphis this 11th day of April, 2023. Councilwoman Jana Swearengen Washington, Memphis City Council, District Four. Congratulations. Before Dr. Payne comes, he is such a humble, humble doctor and community advocate. He said he would be nowhere without his team. We also would like to recognize Darkus Payne, his beautiful wife, Erin Jones, Courtney Bell, Levon Atkins, Davina Jones, Shanette Chandler, Aubra Boyd, Jennifer Yvonne, Brianna Bullard, Latonya Ellington, and Tashara Hunter. Thank you all for your wonderful work that you're doing in our community. And I see Mr. Hancock there. Come on, Dr. Payne.
First of all, thank you all. How you doing, Martavis? Good seeing you, my brother.
Hey, Doc.
Thank you all for this opportunity just to be here, to be able to just receive this recognition. And you know, my football coach right here, he always taught me about teams. So when they told me they were recognizing me, I told him I had to be upfront, which is a lot of people that have helped me do these things. So I love to include them with it also, because it's all about team. But thank you for the recognition. Thank you for everyone that's standing here with me. Thank you for my loved ones who have gone on before me who has impacted me. But as a Hamatonian, I'm a product of this community, and I feel that if the community raised me, it's my effort to do my best to try to put back with the community that I'm a part of. So once again, thank you all. You see, I have a pretty good team, women. Anything that we can do for you all, you all just let us know. We'll definitely be here. Thank you all, and much love.
And I so move.
Thank you, and it has been seconded. And Madam Comptroller, will you please show that this item has been passed by acclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number three?
Item number three is a resolution designating April 14th, 2023 as Blue and Green Day Mid-South in the city of Memphis. This resolution is sponsored by the Memphis City Council.
Dr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Here's our resolution. Whereas every year, National Donate Life observes Blue and Green Day to amplify the importance of registering as an organ and tissue donor, and encouraging the public to wear blue and green to raise awareness. And whereas more than 100,000 Americans, including 4,000 in the Mid-South area, are currently on the national transplant waiting list, and whereas another person is added to the waiting list every 10 minutes. And on average, 20 people die every day because the organs they need are not donated in time. And whereas we can all do our part to save lives by educating and encouraging our peers and loved ones to register as an organ and tissue donor, and whereas the Memphis City Council supports National Donate Life and Mid-South Transplant Foundation in its efforts to bring new life to men, women, and children in need of life-saving organ and tissue transplants. And whereas we hold those who have saved lives through the gifts of donation in the highest regard and are grateful for their selflessness. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Memphis City Council does hereby designate the 14th day of April, 2023 as Blue and Green Day Mid-South in the city of Memphis, and encourages all residents to promote the importance of organ and tissue donation and wearing blue and green on that day. Given by my hand, Jeffrey Warren, Memphis City Council, Martavis Jones, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I so move.
My name is Kim Van Frank, and I'm the Executive Director at Mid-South Transplant Foundation. And I just want to say thank you to the whole entire council for your continued support of organ and tissue donation, and Councilman Warren for helping bring this resolution forward. Mid-South Transplant Foundation, we're the organization that's been serving the Mid-South for over 50 years, helping to facilitate organ and tissue donation from those precious donor families that give that gift of life to those recipients that receive. And so we're all about spreading give that gift of life to those recipients that receive. And so we're all about spreading awareness in this event today, and you acknowledging helps us do that. We want to encourage everyone to make the decision for themselves to become organ and tissue donor, because you too can help someone in the future. And again, thank you. Friday, this Friday is National Blue and Green Day. And so as you're out and about Friday, look around your city, look at the bridges, because they're going to be lit up in blue and green. And every time you see Blue and Green, that's an organization that is helping bring awareness. And you too can light up your business, wore your home on Friday, and do the same. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That item has been moved and seconded. Madam Comptroller, will you please show that that item has been approved by acclamation? Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number four?
Item number four is a resolution recognizing Timothy Jones for his community work as founder of the Black and Autistic Foundation. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Logan.
Councilwoman Logan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I am so excited today to be able to recognize our honoree right now. You know, we hearing the news so much, young African-American males are being seen on the news with spinning out or guns or arrested or something negative. But it's such a blessing to be able to, and a privilege to be able to recognize young African-American men that are giving back to the community and doing great things. So I'm going to read into your hearing this resolution. Memphis City Council, oh my goodness, I left my glasses. Can you have my glasses right there? I was too excited. Thank you. Yeah, I would have just been standing here. Okay. Whereas when worthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council and by extension the citizens of Memphis have seen fit to honor individuals that have made a great impact in their community and to the great city of Memphis, Tennessee. Timothy Jones is one such individual, and so is befitted this great honor. And whereas Timothy Jones, also known as TMTP Jones, is an autism advocate and founder of the nonprofit, the Black Autistic Foundation, which raises awareness and the continued need of acceptance concerning autism in the black community. Mr. Jones is an acclaimed author of children's books. This book that I have here is called Kamal's Different World, which chronicles the life of a wonderful black boy with autism. And whereas Timothy Jones is a true servant, particularly in the North Memphis community, in the summer of 2022, he organized a backpack drive called the Hump and Lee, We Got Your Backpack Drive, to honor two of his childhood friends, Humphrey Ford and Lee Fitzgerald, who were both victims of gun violence in 2020. Mr. Jones has successfully orchestrated community interventions by convening rival gangs and street organizations to sponsor food giveaways in order to promote peace, unity, and diminish selfless gun violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Memphis City Council commemorates Timothy TP Jones on his outstanding accomplishments and contributions, serving as a model for community-centered leadership, given by my hand under the great seal of the city of Memphis this 11th of April 2023. Rhonda Logan, Memphis City Council, District 1. And I so move.
All right, I'm a little nervous because I ain't used to this. But I just want to thank everybody who thought enough of me to nominate me for this. I want to thank my parents for always being, setting the example and being there. Sarah Carpenter for believing in me, always having my back, her and the whole Memphis League family. Mama Sonic Brothers, Prince Hall. Just want to thank everybody.
Madam Comptroller, will you please show that that item has been approved by acclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number five?
Item number five is a resolution congratulating City University School Girls Preparatory on their tenure charter renewal by the Memphis Shelby County Schools Board of Education. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Robinson.
Councilwoman Roberts.
Robinson and Ford. This is a great day in the city of Memphis and Whitehaven. This is another outstanding person and organization in our community. Whereas City University School Girls Preparatory, located in the Whitehaven Community, opened in 2014, and is the first public charter middle school for girls in Memphis, Tennessee. And whereas City University School Girls Preparatory, and we're going to call it now on Girls Prep, is committed to quality education for its female scholars throughout their enrollment, with the mission of City University Schools in part being to prepare its students with the necessary skills to be 21st century scholars as well as citizens. Girls Prep seeks to inspire and motivate female scholars to strive for excellence and to endeavor and whereas following a year-long recess process or review process, I'm sorry, review process, City University School Girls Preparatory was recently, listen to this, approve for a 10-year charter renewal by the Memphis Shelby County Schools Board of Education. And whereas the City University Girls Preparatory met the Memphis Shelby County Schools focal expectations for charter schools, which are academics, finance, operations as well, in addition to meeting their public commitment to continually supporting their scholars and families as well as serving the community. And whereas Girls Prep was recently acknowledged as the 2022-23 Level 5 School, that's the highest five number you can get, and Reward School based on the school's 2021-22 Accountability Cycle. Reward School status is the top distinction a school can earn in the state of Tennessee. And Girls Prep was one of four schools, the only charter school to be distinguished as a perfect state accountability score school in the Memphis Shelby County School District. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Councilwoman Patrice J. Robinson, and the Memphis City Council do join in congratulating City University School Girls Preparatory on its charter renewal and wished the school continued success and positive impact, given by my hand under the great seal of the city of Memphis, this 11th day of August 2023. Patrice Jordan Robinson, Memphis City Council Member, District 3, congratulations. Let's give them a hand. And their chancellor, Lamorne Robinson, I'd like to say, people think this is my nephew. Well, he called me, ain't he? I am so proud of him and the school and the relationship that they have in our community. Congratulations, and we'd like for you to say just a few words.
Thank you, Councilwoman Robinson, and to all City Council. I want to say just very quickly, after education and the rest of the citizens of Memphis and across this great country suffered during a pandemic, it was great to see our girls come back into the school and not only test well, but also with our faculty and staff working hard with them to receive Reward School status, but not only Reward School status in Level 5, but to be the only charter school in the city of Memphis to be recognized by the state as a perfect state accountability score school. I would like to give that recognition to all the faculty and staff of City University School Girls Preparatory, and as well as the girls that so believed in themselves that despite the pandemic, it could be done. Thank you so much.
And you so move, Ms. Robinson? And you so move?
Oh, I'm sorry. I so move.
Thank you. Madam Comptroller, will you please show that that item has been approved by acclamation? Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number six?
Item number six is a resolution congratulating the Overton High School Boys Basketball Team on winning the 2023 TSSAA Class 4A State Championship. This resolution is sponsored by everybody.
For 60 years, the school has been here, and we never been to the state or even won the state in basketball. We celebrate the success of the basketball team. But again, we are known as performing our school, and now we will be known as an athletic school also, and along with being an increase of academic strength. So we're proud of this moment, man. So not only just for sports, but again, when you went to the state tournament, people say, hey, that's performing our school. But guess what? We were winning sports too.
It's still surreal right now. My body is still numb. It was a great, great atmosphere, great moment. It meant so much to me as far as just being in the moment at MTSU, seeing those boys on that big floor, having to do all that hard work preparing to be on a big floor like that. It's just an excitement time here at Overton High School. We're just celebrating every day.
Great feeling, you know, especially being the first one in school history. It's just a deeper meaning than just, you know, winning it for this year. Means it for school history. So it's big. We worked from August all the way to now. Like, it was just a challenge every day, going over, pushing us every day to get better than we were the day before. So just doing that every day, it got us to this goal ball. Great. We feel like we on top of the world, you know? We worked for it. We earned it. So this feeling ain't nothing but deserved.
Just in case colleagues or City of Memphis, y'all needed a gentle reminder on who's up here being honored. We're not gonna play it again. All right. So good afternoon, you all, colleagues. This resolution, I am so excited to present to my school, the students that we serve, the principal that we work under, and the coach that we support as well. I will not read it all into the resolution, into the record, but I do want to give you some pieces. So whereas most notably recognized as the creative school for the performing arts, the 2022-2023 Memphis Overton High School Boys Basketball Team experienced a hallmark season, expressed by the extreme talent and creative performance in the school's athletic history. Overton High School Boys Basketball Team won the 2023 Class 4A Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association Basketball State Championship, led by Coach Shelby Rose. The basketball team achieved a long anticipated feat. Rose himself achieved his own personal coaching milestone. He is the recipient of the 2023 Basketball Coaches Association of Tennessee Boys Coach of the Year Award. Overton High School Team started at 08 in the district during Rose's first year, and now just two years later, they are district champs. The team's first year overall record was 1213, second year 2011, and this year they ended 3311. Although the whole of this newly assembled team contributed to the victory, there were a few notable standouts. And we do have the whole team here today, y'all. Jordan Fryson is currently the only four-year player on the team who began his high school career along with Coach Rose. Mr. Fryson, Xavier Alexander, and Jalen Hardaway were named to the 2023 District All Tournament Team, All Region Tournament Team, and the All State Tournament Team. The role players played a significant part in this successful season, as players had good games and some players participated in the Basketball Coaches Association All-Star Game. In addition to the reference gentleman, the team is comprised of the following outstanding players: Aaron Hardwick, Cortavious Gatewood, Dreshawn Motley, Cordell Bailey, Watson Bledsoe, Gary Greer, Jeremiah Fullylove, and Jashawn Whedon. The coaching staff also boasts assistant coaches Darren Word, Nicholas Grant, and Terrence Moore. Coach Rose expresses he is Peacock proud of his coaching staff and players for a job well done this season. And I also want to just note, y'all, that Mr. Fryson, raise your hand, Mr. Fryson, he was also named MVP Player for the state this year. Can we give it up for Mr. Fryson? Did I say it right? I say it right? Okay, just make sure. Now therefore be it resolved that the Memphis City Council joins with the staff and faculty of Overton High School and with family friends and the entire Memphis community in honoring and celebrating the Overton High School Boys Basketball Team on their historical championship placement in Tennessee High School Athletics, and for their impact on the city of Memphis. And Chair, I so move. And this is also with the whole entirety of the Memphis City Council. Let's give it up again for them, y'all.
Coming up here and receiving these honors, just thank you for the City Council, you know, for bringing us up here and winning this first state championship in school history, you know, it's just, it's a great feeling and, you know, the feeling to finally set in. So especially going out our last year like that, winning a state championship for the school is just, it's a great feeling.
And you so move. Okay. That item has been moved and seconded. And Madam Comptroller, will you please show that this item has been approved by acclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Williams, Ms. Williams. Can I have the principal to come, please? Ms. Williams, is there anybody else in these chambers that you've coached?
Yes.
Who would that be?
Councilman Smalley.
Did he win a championship for you?
Uh, no.
Okay.
District championship. I coached him for three years at Bolton High School.
Okay, okay, just checking. But he didn't bring one of those shiny things back?
Not a gold ball, no, sir. But I left his junior year. He probably could have. I left his junior year.
Oh, okay.
He's a great player, though. Great player. Yes, sir. But he did pass the bar of the dam in Tennessee and in Mississippi. I'm aware of that, too. I got you, all right.
Thank you for your leadership. Young men, you all have made history. So you have a lot to be proud of. Keep up the good work.
Thank you for your support. Yes, sir. Thank you much.
Congratulations, all.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Comptroller, can you call item number seven?
Item number seven is a resolution honoring FedEx for 50 years of serving the city of Memphis. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by This resolution is sponsored by Chairman Jones.
Mr. Chair, you recognize?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. Is there a representative, yes, from FedEx here? Hi there, thank you. Colleagues, I'd like to read into the record this resolution here. Whereas on occasion, the Memphis City Council deems it necessary to use its platform to honor organizations that have served this community. FedEx Corporation having contributed greatly to the City of Memphis since beginning its operation in 1973 is certainly worthy of recognition. Whereas before FedEx Corporation became the global powerhouse, as we know today, it began as an idea in 1965, when Frederick Douglass, Frederick W. Smith wrote a term paper that proposed a new revolutionary way to accommodate time-sensitive shipments. Though he received an average grade, Mr. Smith strongly believed in his vision and continued to pursue it. And whereas Mr. Smith founded FedEx Corporation in 1971 in Little Rock, Arkansas, on April 17th, 1973, Federal Express began operations in the great city of Memphis with 389 team members that got to work without delay as it managed to ensure that fourteen, a whopping fourteen aircraft were able to deliver 186 packages to twenty-five U.S. cities that same night. And whereas while FedEx Corp, Federal Express Corporation was expanding its reach across the nation, Mr. Smith was hard at work behind the scenes, ensuring the corporation continued to grow into the future. In 1977, the corporation was able to acquire seven Boeing 727s after two years of lobbying that led Congress to deregulate air cargo. As a result of Mr. Smith's efforts, Federal Express was listed on the New York Stock Exchange as FDX in 1978. In 1981, Federal Express introduced the Overnight Letter, which began delivery to Canada and opened its super hub next to the Memphis International Airport. And whereas shortly after its beginning, Federal Express Corporation experienced tremendous growth and due to the efforts of many, achieved great success. The corporation made history in 1983 when it became the first company in America to reach 1 billion in revenues within ten years of startup without mergers or acquisitions. It later started its intercontinental operations with service to Europe and Asia. And whereas the corporation rebranded itself as FedEx in 1994 and launched the first transportation website with online package tracking that year, there's no question that vision and foresight of Mr. Smith all those years ago has become, has come to fruition and even exceeded expectation of what was possible back in 1965. Whereas though FedEx Corporation expanded its reach across the globe, its dedication to Memphis has remained steadfast. The corporation is currently one of the city's largest employers, demonstrating its investment not only in the success of the corporation, but in the people outside of its daily operations. FedEx Corporation has invested its resources to connect people and possibilities around the world responsibly and resourcefully with a goal to achieve carbon-neutral operations by 2040. Now therefore be it resolved that the city, that the Memphis City Council honors and commands FedEx Corporation for its commitment to the City of Memphis and for establishing itself as a pillar in our community and the world for the last fifty years. We look forward to the corporation's continued growth and participation in our great city. So here to accept this is Ms. Crystal Oliver. Any comments, please? And I so move.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much. I am Crystal Oliver, Vice President of the Memphis World Hub at FedEx Express. I started my career at FedEx in 1981 as a cargo handler, just eight years after the company began. It has just been amazing to watch this company grow, continue to innovate, and to continually ask, what's next? FedEx began operations in Memphis in April 1973 with a team of less than 400 people. On the first day of operations, FedEx delivered 186 packages. Today, the company has grown to a global mainstay of 530,000 team members delivering 15 million shipments daily. In Memphis today, we have more than 35,000 employees and team members, and we operate in 220 countries and territories. We are truly honored to be here today and to be recognized for our fifty years. We are proud to be and to call Memphis home. We are thankful for the local workforce that help us take FedEx to the next level. Thank you very much.
Madam Controller, could you please show this item approved by acclamation? Madam Controller, could you please call item number eight? Nine? Yeah, please call item number nine.
Item number nine is a resolution pursuant to Chapter 9.6 of the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code approving a planned development at the subject property located at 824 Sim Street. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is PD 23-02.
Councilwoman Jones, you recognize? Hold on, your mic's not on. One second.
Thank you, Chair. This item was discussed and reviewed in Planning and Zoning Committee. It received a favorable recommendation, and I so move.
That item, that item has been moved and properly seconded. Seeing no council members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for votes?
Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Please show Vice Chairman Smiley as voting yes for this item, and Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call our consent agenda? I'm sorry, Madam Controller, will you please call item number 44?
Item number 44 is a resolution approving a lease agreement for two, three-year periods and automatic three-year renewal periods for use of the rooftop at the Cornelia Crenshaw Branch Library, 531 Fans Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee 38126, for towers to transmit wireless internet across the Foot Homes neighborhood, District 6, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by Library Services.
Thank you. Councilwoman Swerengen, Washington?
This item was met and had favorable approval, so. I move it.
electronic clip, please? That item has been moved by Councilwoman Swerengen, Washington, and seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Johnson, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call our consent agenda items?
To item number 10, which is up for second reading, ordinance number 5860 is sponsored by the Memphis City Council. Item number 11 is also up for second reading. Ordinance number 5861 is sponsored by Councilman Canaly. Item number 12 is up for a second reading. Ordinance number 5862 is sponsored by Councilmember Smiley, Carlisle, Canaly, Colvette, Johnson, Jones, Logan, Robinson, and Warren. Item number 13 is also up for second reading. Ordinance number 5863 is sponsored by Chairman Jones. Item number 14 is up for first reading. It's an ordinance, amending ordinance number 5367 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Memphis, Tennessee, adopted on August 10th, 2010, as amended, known as the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code, to authorize a zoning use district reclassification for land located at the northwest corner of North Front Street and A.W. Willis Avenue by taking the land out of the heavy industrial use district and including it in the mixed-use district. Up for first reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is Z 23-03. The ordinance number is 5864. Item number 15 is an ordinance, amending ordinance number 5367 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Memphis, Tennessee, adopted on August 10th, 2010, as amended, known as the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code, to authorize a zoning use district reclassification for land located at 5591 Pigeon Roost Road by taking the land out of the Conservation Agriculture CA Use District and including it in the Employment Imp Use District. Up for first reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is Z 23-04. The ordinance number is 5865. From our Engineering Division, we have item number 16, Resolution Accepting Public Improvements for Memphis Rise Academy Traffic Signal, CR 5351, and authorizes release of bond. There is a request for same-night minutes. Item number 17 is a resolution approving supplemental agreement number one for CR 5397 Gardens of Grace Creek subdivision Phase III. There is a request for same-night minutes. The contract number is CR 5397. On our add-ons, we have item number 46, Ordinance to amend Title VI, Chapter 92, to extend the Sunset Clause for the Equal Business Opportunity Program. Up for first reading, ordinance number 5866 is sponsored by the Administration. There is a request to add this to our agenda and same-night minutes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our consent agenda items.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That item has been moved by Councilman Colvette, seconded by Councilwoman Robinson, seeing no members, I'm sorry. Colleagues, I do have comment cards, and normally we're not taking any action on anything, but there are individuals who have taken time out of their day. Okay. Well, so those individuals that came to speak on item number 11, our rules are that we do not have any commentary on those items during the, during the first or second reading, so. Yes. So if you, if you want to remain present at the end of the meeting to have general comments on this section, I will give these cards back to the Sergeant-at-Arms, and we'll recognize you at that time. So Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote on our consent agenda?
Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call our fiscal consent agenda?
Item number 18 is a resolution to accept grant funds in the amount of $80,363 from the Shelby County Sheriff's Office through the Office of National Drug Control Policy. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Police Services. There is a request for same-night minutes. Item number 19 is a resolution accepting grant funds in the amount of $25,000 from Sea Owl Park Neighborhood Association for improvements at Sea Owl Park, District 5, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Parks. There is a request for same-night minutes. Item number 20 is a resolution to allocate and appropriate grant funds for Leftwich Tennis Center improvements, project number PK 03005, District 5, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Parks. There is a request for same-night minutes. Item number 21 is a resolution accepting grant funds in the amount of $10,000 from Tennessee Valley Authority, TBA, for programming at Alonso Weaver Park, District 6, Super District. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Parks. There is a request for same-night minutes. On our add-ons, we have item number 45, a resolution to amend the FY 23 council grant allocations, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Smiley. There is a request for same-night minutes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our fiscal consent agenda items. Another one? One moment, please.
Forty-seven can't be added.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our fiscal consent agenda items.
Thank you. That item, our fiscal consent agenda has been moved by Councilman Warren, seconded by Councilwoman Robinson. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on these items, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call our MLG fiscal consent agenda items?
Item number 22 is a resolution approving change number two to contract number 12181 App Manager Schedular with Broadcom Incorporated, formerly CA Technologies Incorporated, to renew annual maintenance licenses and support services for existing software in the funded amount of $402,000. Item number 23 is a resolution approving change number two to contract number 12295, Oracle Maintenance and Support with Mythix Incorporated, to renew and change the current contract in the funded amount of $11,157,239.72. Item number 24 is a resolution approving change number two to contract number 12348, solicited under contract number 12294, Temporary Employment Services for Skilled Craftsman Technical with Resource Management Group to ratify, expand the scope, and increase the current contract value in the funded amount of $140,000. Item number 25 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Prime Controls LP for Distributed Process Control Panels for McCord Pumping Station in the amount of $479,715.86. Item number 26 is a resolution approving payment of annual sewer discharge fee for the 2022 filter backwash discharge to City of Memphis in the amount of $819,150.14. Item number 27, resolution approving change number one to contract number 12336, Morton Distributed Process Control Installation to Tri-State Armature and Electrical Works Incorporated. This is to extend and increase the current contract in the funded amount of $2,792. Item number- Item number 28 is a resolution approving the ratification of purchase order number 07036366 to Rush Truck Centers of Tennessee, Inc., for two-ton cab and crew cab and chassis trucks for an additional amount of $88,790. Item number 29 is a resolution approving the ratification of purchase order number 7034772 to Rush Truck Centers of Tennessee, Inc., for two-ton cab and crew cab and chassis for an additional amount of $28,800. Item number 30 is a resolution approving the ratification of purchase order number 7040889 to Rush Truck Centers of Tennessee, Inc., for six-ton cab and chassis tractors for an additional amount of $18,000. Item number 31, resolution approving the ratification of purchase order number 7032235 to Rush Truck Centers of Tennessee, Inc., for a sick-yard dump truck for an additional amount of $4,800. Item number 32 is a resolution approving the ratification of purchase order number 7040887 to Rush Truck Centers of Tennessee, Inc., for cab, eight cab, crew cab, and chassis for an additional amount of $11,790. And our final item, number 33, is a resolution approving change number 2 to contract number 12120, Trash Removal Services with BFI Waste Services LLC, doing business as Republic Services of Memphis, to increase the contract value to pay outstanding invoices in the funded amount of $9,148. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW fiscal consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Controller.
My pleasure.
That item has been moved by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington, seconded by Councilwoman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call item 47?
Item number 47 on our add-ons is a resolution to reallocate and reappropriate American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Memphis Food Waste Project. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Memphis City Council, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you. Councilman Carlisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I say move.
That item has been moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call item 48?
Item number 48 is a resolution to transfer and appropriate funds in the amount of $525,000 for FS1 Construction, project number FS02031, District 7, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by Fire Services. There is a request for same-night minutes.
Councilwoman Logan?
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, recommended approval, and I say move.
Okay, that item has been moved electronically by Councilwoman Logan, seconded by Councilwoman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call item 49?
Item number 49 is a resolution to transfer a contract construction allocation and appropriate funds to contract construction cost for fire station canopy and patio Phases 1 and 2, project number FS23102, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by Fire Services, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Logan?
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, recommended approval, and I say move.
That item has been moved.
I don't see it, to move it electronically, though. I'm sorry.
I got it, but I'm gonna take mine south.
Item 49, yes. So item 49 has been moved.
Logan.
Okay. By Logan, seconded by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call item 50?
Item number 50 is a resolution requesting the approval of a 10-year ground lease agreement between the City of Memphis and Carpenter Art Garden, District 7, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by General Services. There is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you, Madam Controller. Vice Chair Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, that item has been moved by Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilwoman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call item 51?
Item number 51 is a resolution requesting the approval for the sale of a 3.52-acre city-owned parcel located on South Wall Street, Memphis, Tennessee, and further described as parcel number 07308700003, District 4, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by General Services. There is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommend approval, and I say move.
That item has been moved and properly seconded, seeing no council members in the queue to speak on this item. Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call item 52?
Item number 52 is a resolution to allocate and appropriate $154,000 from the FY22 CIP budget for the Raleigh Civic Center, District 1, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by council members Logan and Canali. There is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you. Councilman Colvet?
Committee met, recommends approval, and I say move.
Okay, that item has been moved and seconded, seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item. Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Yes.
Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call item 53?
Item number 53 is a resolution to reallocate and reappropriate American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Raleigh Civic Center, District 1, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by council members Logan and Canali. There is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Colvet, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval, and I say move.
Okay, that item has been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilwoman Warren. I see Councilwoman Logan in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. Colleagues, I've been advised by the council attorney to make the following disclosure before I vote. Because I am a board member of the Raleigh CDC, I may have a potential conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation and to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. I have no personal financial gain in this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So seeing no other council members in the queue to speak on this item, this item has been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilwoman Warren. Seeing no additional members in the queue to speak on it, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call item 34?
Yes, that will take us to our regular agenda appointments. Memphis Board of Ethics, Stacy Clinton. Memphis Area Transit Authority reappointment, Martin E. Lipinski. Memphis Convention Center Commission, reappointments, Calvin Anderson, Isabel Gonzalez Whitaker, Lee Jackson, Natasha Langston, John McKissick, and Thomas Midgley.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairman of the Committee met, recommends approval, and I say move.
Thank you. That item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Controller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, will you please call item 35?
Item number 35 is an ordinance to provide for police reform, codify policies and procedures for Memphis police officers relating to traffic stops, use of force, use of body cameras, anti-profiling rules, personal conduct of officers, and establishing reporting requirements by the Memphis Police Department for officer misconduct and interactions with citizens. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5858, is sponsored by Councilman Canali. Carlisle.
Okay, I got it. I got you. I got you.
Chase, Carlisle.
Thank you. Vice Chair Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I sent out a press release earlier. I'm gonna kind of read the gist of it. I do want to note, this particular legislation did not have a sponsor, so I'm not sure. Councilman Carlisle, take the grief. I'm gonna read this into the record. In the interest of clarity, the council believes it is in the best interest to allow the previous ordinances on criminal justice reform to stand alone. Later, when, and with that, all the previous ordinances are still intact, and with that, I move to table the 2023 Justice and Policing Ordinance indefinitely.
Without objection.
Without objection.
Without objections.
Okay. There's no objection to tabling item number 35. What that means is that it's no longer up for consideration. It will, it can be removed from the table. Before I call on item number 36, I just want to make a public comment about that. We listened. Madam Controller, will you please call item number 36?
Item number 36 is an ordinance to amend the city council meeting dates for 2023. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5859, is sponsored by Councilman Carlisle.
Councilman Carlisle, you're recognized.
It's taking grief down here on these dates. Colleagues, this is a substitute, and it's, since we've got redistricting, I'm okay if you want to keep the same, but staff made a note to me that, and it's now in play, I guess, because we're not gonna have first reading till next time. But this is really, you know, I'll defer to Chairman Jones and Councilwoman Easter Thomas. But if we, if we move June 13th and the 27th and keep the May 16th date, that means we'll go four weeks, three weeks without a meeting? Is that the problem? Four weeks without a meeting. So that's why they're suggesting we move the May 16th date slotted to the 23rd. Because I can't, I can't be there. I have to be there. It's our third vote. So my, yeah. So anyway, I just want you to be aware of that. If you would like to keep that date, I understand, but it was, it was a recommendation from, from staff. I, Jeff?
Josh Chase, why?
I have a prior obligation, and I cannot make it. Here's the, we can vote this thing down, and I'll just be MIA, but I just, I know you, I don't, I want you to be aware of that, because I know you're working on those three readings.
Right.
So.
I guess as, but under the first consideration was, we were moving June 6th and 20th to the 13th and 27th. That's.
Yes, sir.
That's how this.
That's how, and then the domino effect, which didn't, to be honestly, it didn't matter until we kicked the first reading of the redistricting ordinance till next Monday. Now, I'm just saying to you, Chairman, and to you, Councilwoman, that instead of being able to potentially pass something on the 16th, it would be the 23rd. And I know that you've been on some dates, and I can't remember them all, but I just want to be very clear and transparent with you on that.
Yeah, so for, for that very reason, I'm okay with the 13th or the 23rd, but because we're under a different time constraint for the May 16th, I would be, I would be voting against the modification or changing the May 16th meeting to May 23rd.
And honestly, I'm okay with the gap. I'm fine with that, because we're, here's why. We're gonna be meeting in committee for a lot, and if there is a transaction that has to occur, like a resolution, we can figure that out. So I'm okay with that. So then what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it, this is gonna go in the trash.
Right.
And we're just gonna keep the original moving, uh, the.
So what would be, what would be voted on would be the, changing the June meetings from the 6th. from the 6th and the 20th to the 13th and the 27th.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
And that is up for final reading?
And I so move.
Only the June meetings are changing, right. Everything else is, at, when, there are some others that had changed, but we approved that back last year.
Keep in mind, colleagues, I mean, other than the official transaction business, we are gonna be seeing a lot of each other come back.
It may, yeah.
Uh, Jeff, I expect your full support.
Okay, so, see, seeing no other council members to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote? So what we're voting on is changing the June meetings from the 6th and the 20th to the 13th and the 27th. That's the only thing we're voting on.
Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley abstained. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Warren, no. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 38? Well, uh, before I read that, let me just say that for the record, item number 37, uh, will be heard on April 25th. It's still in legal review.
Which I'm also not sponsoring.
I gotta read. Item number 38 is an ordinance amending the City of Memphis Code of Ordinances, Vehicle and Traffic Code to clarify appropriate methods of enforcement of traffic violations. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5849 is sponsored by Councilwomen Easter Thomas and Logan. This was held from 3/21 the last time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm, Madam Comptroller. Councilwoman Logan.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. The committee met and recommended approval and I so move.
Yes. So I would, uh, defer to Councilwoman Easter Thomas, who has comments.
Oh, go ahead. Uh, really? Then he was. Thank you, Chair. Um, so as we discussed in committee meeting today, substitute ordinance number 5849, or otherwise known as the Driver Equality Act, um, I, this was held for two times before, um, because I wanted to make sure that it was enforceable as possible for those we are asking to do this work, our Memphis police officers, as well as maintaining clarity in what this ordinance is asking, what it's saying and what it's not saying. And I will repeat what we talked about in committee earlier today, um, for the good of the folks we have here with us. But what this ordinance is, is surrounding the idea of pretextual stops, how they aren't helpful, and how they divert resources away from our clearly intentioned needs in our communities, such as dealing with crime and aiding our citizens. And so if there is a pretextual stop, that's considered a primary violation in wording of this ordinance. So in the ordinance, you have primary violation and you have secondary. This ordinance is axing and directing NPD to not stop individuals on the road who may just be exhibiting that one primary violation, and it lists five. So I'll go through them. Um, A is registration of vehicles, when the vehicle had been previously registered within the City of Memphis within 60 days of the observed infraction. So that's for plain where the view, if your tags are expired under 60 days, that's included on this ordinance. Also, where the violation is only related to the location of the temporary registration permit, but the permit is otherwise clearly displayed in the rear window. So item B is saying if your tag is somewhere other than the bottom middle of your bumper, but it's a legit temporary tag, um, not a counterfeit tag. That is not discussed in this ordinance as well. C says where the violation only pertains to a registration plate, not securely fastened to the vehicle, but such plate is otherwise clearly displayed. So that may be in the back window. Um, that may be taped to the side back of your car. The key word here is clearly, and making sure that that's a legitimate plate. D, lighted lamps, where the violation for lighting equipment not illuminating is limited to a single brake light, headlight or running light. A single bulb and a larger light of the same, or any single light or bulb of a vehicle light. That does not say turning signal, so we wanted to make sure that we clarified that for earlier. Please use your turning signal. Thank you, Councilwoman Carlisle. And then E, loosely secured bumpers or missing bumpers. And I think that's pretty self-explanatory. And so as we talked about and I think agreed upon earlier, colleagues, these are things that may be seen in the light of poverty stops. Things that would require individuals. Things that would require individuals to pay citations, to pay. We know that we are, may have issues with our cars. You know if your car is missing a bumper, if your car has trouble with headlights or brake lights. Um, you know where your tag is displayed, and you know whether you're making sure that it's clearly displayed or not. What that is not saying, um, that if you are driving very aggressively, um, if you are posing a dangerous threat to other citizens on the road, that would be a primary violation. And then if that primary violation is done, and then you have these other things, that's what this ordinance is saying, that it's okay to tack on to this citation. And so as everybody has been on our Memphis streets and our expressways, this is a different type of driving that we've seen in the past couple of years. What this ordinance is not saying is that do not go to those aggressive drivers. It's not saying we're not looking for, example, NPD not to look for counterfeit tags. It's diverting our resources to where we need it most, which is for NPD to fight crime and for us and for them to be in their communities being supportive, um, and engaging so that we can build our positive rapport between our officers and our community members. And what this ordinance does is it helps moves us towards that, because it limits the possible negative interactions that our officers could have with the community if we're making sure we focus on what's really important on our roads and in our communities. So I think we got out a lot of our discussion earlier, colleagues. Um, I will say that Memphis, if we adopt this today, we will be the sixth city in America to do so. Um, the fifth and most recent was in Philadelphia. And with their Driver Equality Act, they ensured that they had an accompanying traffic data reporting system. Um, hopefully that comes soon, and so we can use that to actually look at the data, see who's been pulled over and for what reasons, um, but so that we can have something to back up and see, is this working or not? Um, also, I will say, as I said earlier, I did have the chance to discuss this with Police Chief Davis, and making sure that, okay, if you are the ones that have to implement this, I wanna make sure that this is clear to you. And I wanna make sure this is enforceable for your officers, and she confirmed it. So with that, I ask my colleagues to join me on this vote, um, and add as a co-sponsor to, uh, myself and Councilwoman Logan. And I think that this will be very helpful in what we're looking at as increasing our resources that are in the places that we need them, which is in our communities, and actually going towards actual crimes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Easter Thomas. I have an queue, Councilman Carlisle, followed by Councilwoman Logan and Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is from Councilwoman Canali earlier. He had, he fell ill earlier today and, and had to go home. Um, but he made a comment in committee and I just wanted to pass it along. We, as we go through budget season this year, and as we looked at muffler ordinances and issues that we were running into two years ago, we created and partnered with private enterprise to create a muffler exchange program. And so as we go through budget season this year, and as, is also looking at ways in which we can support, I know Decarcerate has a brake light program, but bumpers as well, seeing how we can partner with auto repair shops, et cetera, and use city funding to try and assist people that are having issues. It's, it's, yeah. This, yeah, we're clapping for Canali, this is not my idea, I just wanted you to, I wanted you to hear it, um, and give her credit where credit's due. But we're gonna explore that, we're gonna look at options for that. And we, it was relatively successful for muffler, but people should have the option if it's available. They can't afford a bumper, I know they'd want one. And so anyway, I just wanted to pass that along for the public.
Thank you, Councilman Carlisle. Councilwoman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I wanna thank the audience and my council members, uh, for taking the time to discuss this item and making sure that the citizens of Memphis understood what we were trying to do. I, only thing that I see that's not here, and you mentioned it, is the accountability piece. Councilmembers, if we don't say nothing but one statement, that we expect some accountability and it, it needs to be in here. If you can just add one line, because if it's not there, it might not happen. I do believe we need to ask for that accountability at some point, a some date certain. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Robinson. Uh, Councilwoman Logan? Yeah?
Councilwoman Robinson, would you clarify when you say accountability?
Implementation date and as well as, uh, when we will see data. Is it gonna be once a quarter, once a year? W- w- we need to make sure that that's included, so there is no, uh, place for us not to get that information. All of us will not be here for the rest of the year or next year, but we need to make it a part of everything that we do, that the citizens of Memphis and the council get some reporting back in a timely manner, not just say we gonna do it, but when we want that. And I'd just like to make that as a change in your, um, substitute ordinance, that we just add the accountability piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, it says it's effective immediately. That accountability, what you're speaking to is the data reporting portion, which should be present in the, I don't know which number that was, in the data ordinance that we passed. If it's not, we can always amend it and add to ensure that accountability is in there. But that's an accompanying ordinance. That will be accompanying it, so that's why the data isn't mentioned in here.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also wanna thank the sponsors of this particular piece of legislation, but I, I got in a queue because I also wanna thank the community organizations who've been here since the very beginning, I think since it's been a long process, um, for many of us, um, attempting to create reform in the city. So to Decarcerate Memphis, to MICA, and to those community members, thank you, and just give yourselves a round of applause. It, 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 it means a lot to see, you know, this many people concerned with this work. Um, it's time consuming. I know a lot of you all are not being paid for what you're doing. You're showing up here because you care. You care about people, you care that the City of Memphis, um, is held out in the best light possible. You care that when law enforcement officers are pulling people over, then they're acting, um, like they have respect for humanity and with decency. You're not here because you're being paid, you're not here because you seeking attention, you here because you're trying to do what's right. And I, I also wanna give my colleagues, uh, some credit. A lot of times, I've been critical of previous councils, but this council hurt you all. We've implemented what we believe, and what you all believe to be serious change as relates to criminal justice reform. So thank, thank you to each one of you. Thank you to the members of the House, and I believe that with our vote today, we have set the standard of what it looks like to create change in wake of a terrible incident in the City of Memphis. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chair. And I, um, so excited that we have been able to pass all of the ordinances and resolutions, and together we've been able to make change. And I also want to ask that the same organizations, thank you for your time and your energies, know that you had a lot to do on the outside. Wanna ask you to also use that same passion and energy. Now we're to head to the courts, um, you know, and address the courts. There are a lot of things that are happening with, whether it's the DA, whether it's the state, there's a lot more work to be done, and we've seen how together we can make those changes here. Now it's time to continue on, um, to the next level to really make it lasting and sustainable. So thank you all for the work that you've done.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Mr. Chair, I just want to ask to be a co-sponsor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. If there's any council member that would not like to be a co-sponsor, uh, please raise your hand.
No pressure.
Okay. I, I just wanted to publicly thank you for introducing this, Councilwoman Easter Thomas. I also wanna thank, uh, the community. I have to say it again, we listened. Uh, I invite you, you know, the, seeing this number of people in the audience is encouraging because we have too many issues where it can be radio silence. And so I'm just grateful for you all, uh, coming out, letting your voices be heard. Uh, particularly with this item, you know, as we, there was a robust discussion that we had in committee meeting today, but, uh, we, we have a, we have a, a major problem in, in this city with stolen vehicles, illegal tags. And as someone who has been a victim of somebody sideswiping their car, and then having illegal tags, and we can't, they can't locate who they are, this is an issue. And I'm, I'm sure if any one of you are in your vehicle, you would want law enforcement to go after whoever it is, and hopefully they have insurance. And so what we did run up against when this was first introduced, is that there are certain things that we couldn't get around state law in doing so. So originally, the bumpers were not included in this, were they?
The bumpers, I always put the bumpers in there.
Okay.
They were in there.
But, but there are certain, there were certain measures that we could not get around state law, and so I just wanna thank you for your patience, because we, we had to work our way around that and ending, make, make sure that if, what we were adding here in this was gonna be, uh, was gonna be permissible by state law. So I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in this. Yes, so we do have comment cards, and we have quite a few, so I'm gonna ask that, uh, because we've listened, I'm sure that some of, hopefully some of your comments will take that into consideration, but the first comment that we have is Beth Hoffberg and everyone. If we're gonna listen to everybody, we're gonna have to, I'm gonna strictly enforce the two minute, I'm cutting you off in two minutes, so be warned. Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Beth Hoffberg, 717 South Riverside Drive, Memphis 38103. Thank you. Thank you for listening to us. Really do appreciate it. Um, I would like to make an ask. I know that because, uh, the Justice and Policing Ordinance is no longer on the table, um, and we don't have an ordinance that really brings everything together for Tyree. Um, his family is wanting to have this ordinance have a short title in his name, so just inserting a section amendment, that's a short title, calling it the Tyree Nichols Driving Equality Act, if we could please do that, and really, um, put Memphis on the stage that we're trying to seek here, this positive stage. I would really love to see that if we could, um, and I just, I appreciate that you're doing this, I do appreciate that you're listening to us. I do wanna also draw attention to the fact that there are some voices that are not being listened to today because they've been banned from council. And, uh, they were banned supposedly for profanity. I was at those meetings and I have recordings and there was no profanity by those members, so I just want to say that, um, I don't think that we So, I just want to say that I don't think that we should be banning black voices, and I would like to have those people be welcomed back in here to celebrate because they were part of this work too. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Massey.
My name is Richard Massey. My address is 3615 Central Avenue, 38111. Through a letter address, the mayor claimed that this ordinance will inhibit MPD's capacity to fight crime in our city. We're here to tell you as a community, the facts and statistics simply don't add up. Pretextual stops made solely on the basis of secondary violations, such as equipment infractions, have been generally ineffective in conjuring real legitimate criminal investigations and/or identifying contraband. And since they want specific language as far as what a secondary violation is, we're talking about being pulled over explicitly for a dangling graduation task, a dangling air freshener, a broken taillight, a loose bumper, a cracked windshield, defective turn signals, expired tags, broken license plate lights, and tinted windows. The cost to enforce haul-ins for only these violations is cost a deficit within the MPD. And that's, and that's precisely what needs to be addressed in the budget. Not to mention, these haul-ins are enforced with discretion of race, as black motorists are disproportionately hauled over and subjected to an arbitrary search and investigation. These stops divert essential police resources and attention from the violent crime that is permeated throughout our city, as well as posing heightened danger for both citizens and officers alike through adverse situations. There have been narratives produced to persuade people to think that the community wants to do away entirely with traffic enforcement at large. That simply isn't true either. We want to end the same petty pretextual traffic stops that have ravaged our city budget, that have placed our community police relations in turmoil, and that have since prefaced a modern day lynching of a man 80 yards away from his mother's residence. If the city of Los Angeles can institute these changes, Memphis can too. If the state of Oregon can institute these changes, Memphis can too. If Philadelphia can institute these changes, Memphis can too. If Virginia can institute these changes, Memphis can too. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker card is from Josh Adams. Ms. Adams?
Yes.
You have a different address listed here. Is that, is that your resident's address?
No, that's my work address.
Okay. If you could list your home address here, the one that's on the card.
4750 Woodbridge Drive.
Thank you.
Yep. So, Josh Adams, anyway. So, I sat in the Public Safety Committee meeting this morning, and I listened as Councilman Chase Carlisle comforted the police department that if the police officers actually broke the pretext ordinance, that the officers, whatever they found in the ordinance would still be a legal arrest. And I find that to be the comfort of oppressors. And I think that as people comfort oppressors, they build up a system of violence in the city. That system of violence is actually what conspired to kill Tyree Nichols on January 7th of this year. As several officers beat Tyree Nichols to death, this comfort has led to the lack, to the lack of police department passing any preventative policy thus far. And so, as a representative of the public, I think it's atrocious that you lift your voice to comfort oppressive behavior by the police department. And I think that what you need to do is leave the conservative talk show, talk on the conservative talk shows, and leave that out of governance entirely. Because what happens is, the people organize, and what we do is we track your political aspirations, and we organize to make sure that you are cast into politi, into political oblivion. I, I don't think Amy Wyer came to her.
Uh, Ms. Adams, address your comments.
You should call him in order.
No, no. Address your comments to me.
Okay. And so, I, I also find it extremely interesting that we ban people because they knew how dangerous that this, that this pretext stop was to people, and they had an outcry on the second reading of the Wade ordinance, which was going to ban this ordinance entirely. And I think that is absolutely undemocratic.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Lucy Charm. Ms. Charm? Lucy Charm, yes.
Hey, y'all.
Hi.
My name is Lucy Charm, 3160 Spotswood Avenue, 311. I don't feel like I need to lecture you guys tonight. Y'all are going to do the right thing. I've said that before, though, and y'all tricked me, so. I do appreciate your vice chair for meeting with us on a Saturday afternoon in a stuffy community room to go over this, these ordinances line by line. That was good faith leadership, and it's appreciated. I wish I could say the same for everyone else, but I can't. We know you guys are going to pass this ordinance. Thank you for doing that. You took Tyree's name off of that disrespectful ordinance that you crafted. Thank you for that. You decided to table that, that we don't need. Thank you for that. And I want to say thank you to Derek Van Bost. He is the special assistance to Reverend Jesse Jackson. He came to support us tonight, so thank you for being here. What I don't appreciate is the fascism that we've seen displayed in this room. What I don't appreciate is that there are people out in the lobby, or maybe out in the parking lot, who have put more sweat equity into this city than a whole lot of people sitting in front of me right now. I don't appreciate the disrespect that some people who sit in these chairs up here think is okay to treat their citizens with. And I guess everyone in the room knows who I'm talking to. That's really all I got to say. I know y'all are going to do the right thing. We appreciate you doing the right thing. We appreciate the good faith leadership of one person on this council. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Reverend Rosalyn Nichols?
Councilmembers, we have come to this chamber and voiced repeatedly, passionately, our determination to honor what we promised to the family of Tyree Nichols. If we have done so in ways that violated the definition of decorum, we have done so because too often polite African-American people do not get justice. Those who have been banned are our colleagues, who are deeply committed to a better Memphis, and we believe they should be reinstated, as it is the voices of the people that they bring change to these chambers. Council Smiley, Councilman Smiley, we value the community conversation this past Saturday and look forward to more of those types of conversations with more voices in the future. Given what we have faced for decades from the death of Larry Payne Bertram Brunson and Darius Stewart, each murdered at the hands of law enforcement unrecognized and without vindication, given the egregious murder of Tyree, not only have we been disappointed by shenanigans and backdoor politics, but it has left us feeling unsafe. And so, on this day, we do thank you. We thank you for hearing us, for responding to us, and for voting that the alleged Tyree Nichols justice would be not only tabled indefinitely, but we expect that it will be dead on arrival if it ever comes up again. Still, our work is not done, and so, we therefore support the immediate passage of Ordinance 5849, known as the Driving Equality Ordinance, sponsored by Councilwoman Easter Thomas. And in support of the parents of Tyree Nichols, as others have said, we are asking that that ordinance be changed to the Tyree Nichols Driving Equality Ordinance. Because as you all well know, this ordinance will reduce the threat against citizens and the loss of life by the hands of police in the name of law enforcement. This will be the first step for the healing that starts as we begin to move as a community beyond the darkness of January 7th toward a model for our nation with Memphis leading. This request of the family is a small ask with a large implication for all who have given up on hope, that beginning with the confirmation of this request, we can begin a new day and a new dawn in our city and our nation.
Vice Chair Smiley, you're recognized.
I think you heard Chairman Jones say we listen, so I moved to, hopefully friendly amendment, moved to name the Driving Equality Act, Tyree Nichols Driving Equality Act.
Is there any objection?
Are those all the cards? Are those all the cards? I need to think about hope that, and that's why I was, hope that, and can we read through all the cards?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, you withdraw that motion?
Sure.
Okay. I have a card here from Jamen Carter. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Good evening, sir.
My name is Jamen Carter. I'm a pastor, Christ City Church. My address is 3190 Highland Park Place.
Thank you.
I'll keep my comments really brief. Thank you for being willing to pass that ordinance, and I would also just like to request that it be named after Tyree Nichols. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker card is from Sarah First.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah First. I live at 705 North Avalon Street, 38107. I want to thank Councilperson, Councilman Smiley as well for the meeting on Saturday. That was great. And also, Councilwoman Easter Thomas for sponsoring this, and also for being responsive this weekend. I'm here to ask you to vote yes on the Driving Equality Ordinance. I understand that we have real struggles with speeding and with reckless drivers, driving. We all experience that, right? But the Driving Equality Ordinance doesn't preclude effective solutions to these dangerous primary violations. Instead, it tries to solve another real problem that members of this body have acknowledged. Black and brown citizens are disproportionately affected by pretextual traffic stops, and that matters. We need to stop the whataboutism as well in discussing this ordinance. When you talk about speeding in school zones and on highways, and all sorts of unrelated scenarios, when we're trying to solve the problem of violent death at the hands of our city, of a black man who wasn't doing any of that, who was just trying to go home, it misses the mark by a lot. We can't accept brutalization, oppression, or humiliation of any human being as collateral damage in a misdirected pursuit of our safety. If we want to do something about speeding and reckless driving in this city, we have options other than overpolicing and terrorizing black citizens, or burdening neighbors with fines. You said you're open, some of you have said you're open solutions, and I'm here for that. We have them throughout the country, and we have been working on them in this city as well. So, I'm here for all the conversations you want to have about effective solutions. But in the meantime, let's deal with the problem at hand, the unequal treatment of black and impoverished drivers in this city. Please vote yes on this ordinance.
Thank you. Our next comment card is from Joy Fairfield. Next is Gillian Winhold.
Hey, Gillian Winhold, 63 North Idolwild Street, 38107. First, I want to say thank you for tabling indefinitely Wade Ordinance, and thank you also in advance for passing this one and for renaming it in honor of Tyree Nichols. I also want to talk about the unjust bans of Amber Sherman, Seema Rasool, Gil Carter, Yolanda Cooper, from attending a publicly funded city council meeting in a public building. Well, the world is watching Tennessee, particularly Memphis and Nashville, due to the recent expulsions of Representatives Jones and Pearson from their house seats. And here in Memphis, our own city councilman, or city council chair mimics Speaker Cameron Sexton by banning community members from the People's Council. Both actions utilize authoritarian rule to abuse their power and silence dissent. Tyrannical oppressive practices that ban and discourage community members from being civically engaged and civically engaging others dissolves the integrity of democracy. Chairman Jones, you are a public servant, and it's your duty to listen to constituents, even when you disagree with them or feel personally offended. You swore an oath to uphold the United States Constitution, which states that every person in this country can exercise their freedom of speech. This is not about ego. This is about justice and the need to create safer communities in our city by banning pretextual traffic stops. Banning people from coming in here and publicly disagreeing with you sets a dangerous precedent that politically aligns you with Republican fascists in the State House. When Tyree Nichols was brutally murdered, some of you joined the people in the streets. Continue standing with the people now and challenge Chairman Jones' decision to ban community leaders from being civically engaged and civically engaging others.
Our next speaker is Seema Rasool.
Seema Rasool, 19 South Tucker. I'm back. I'm going to continue what Gillie was saying.
Name and address for the record, please.
Seema Rasool, 19 South Tucker.
Yes, thank you.
Chairman Jones, you might not care that it's an election year because your term is limited, but many of you here have recently announced your reelection campaigns. I personally do not want to vote for anyone who sits idly by without challenging tyranny. If you are my representative, I expect you to be, to represent the voice of the people. Banning community members and calling them ringleaders is unconstitutional. Banning people for multiple consecutive meetings, me, I was one of them, especially when according to the Code of Ordinances, you can really only kick out of the current, you can only kick people out of the current actual meeting. You can't actually kick them out for multiple consecutive meetings. Well, I digress. And the fact that you're not publicly challenging this decision lets me know how you view leadership through an authoritarian lens. We asked you to ban pretextual traffic stops, which I'm going to go ahead and say thank you. I know you guys are going to probably pass it. And instead, you banned four community organizers from even coming to meetings. I myself, who consistently speaks about the Delhi Exchange Program and the coordination with Israeli occupation forces, has, was banned for two meetings, actually 30 days. Amber Sherman, who Martavius called a ringleader, was banned for two meetings, including today, where y'all will vote on the third reading of the Driving Equality and the Wade Ordinance. Gil Carter, Gil Carter, and Ms. Yolanda Cooper also banned. None of the people banned posed a true threat to anybody's safety here, yet they are treated as violent terrorists that must not enter this public space. The only threat they posed was challenging the status quo. They continued overpolicing of black and brown community members across Memphis. These examples of censorship and violation of the first, of First Amendment rights, particularly of black activists, are all connected and tell the story of oppression and suppression in this state. You can ban individuals, but you cannot ban a movement. Chairman Jones, you have a choice to make history. You're either on the side of justice, or you will go down in history as a leader that perpetrated oppression by silencing dissent and falsely creating an ordinance in the name of Tyree Nichols that actually reinforces the very poor structures that took his life, power structure that took his life.
Ms. Rasool?
Yes.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Our next comment card is from Zayana Cruz, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Hi, my name is Zayana Cruz. That's how you say it. The address listed is 258 North Merton, Memphis, Tennessee. So, I'm just going to continue what Seema Rasool says, since she cut her off and had her banned the last time. So, who do you choose to be? That's a question for all of y'all. What legacy do you want to leave in Memphis at this historical time in our world where everyone is watching how leadership in the state treats black and brown good troublemakers? Who do you want to be? We urge you to rescind the bans and accept healthy conflict as a part of the process, this political process. If there is no justice, there will be no peace until you listen to the demands of our community. That's it.
Thank you. Our next comment card is from Maria Oceja. And I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Maria Oceja. I live at 1651 Duke Road, 38108. Well, Councilwoman Michael and Easter Thomas is not here, but I do want to thank her for her leadership. She is my representative, and I'm really glad to know that she is pushing the Driving Equality Ordinance. Again, I would like to encourage you all to change the name of the Driving Equality Ordinance to the Tyree Nichols Driving Equality Ordinance. Pretextual traffic stops like the one that led to the brutal murder of Tyree Nichols are the most common point of contact for police to harass black and brown people in this city. I can tell you as somebody who lives in Nutbush that this is something that we see every day. We see police officers targeting black and brown working-class community members, pulling them over for pretextual traffic stops that lead to their arrest or even their deaths. I encourage you to pass the ordinance and strengthen it to include driver's license, registration, and insurance violations in the list of violations that people cannot be pulled over for. These violations make up 43% of all traffic stops and are in no way a threat to other safety. So in addition to providing opportunities to police to harass and brutalize individuals, this is criminalizing poverty. Chairman Jones, last week, we saw Cameron Sexton of the Republican Party expel two young Democrats from the House. This is a historical time, and our country is watching all of Tennessee, especially Memphis and Nashville. I urge you to think about the democratic process and not to ban, rescind the bans on all of the people that you have expelled from this space. This is the people's space. We deserve to come in here and speak with you in dissent. This is not about you. This is not about insulting you. This is about standing up for what is right and what is just. And so I urge you to challenge those bans. This isn't about you. Challenge that authoritarian power and all of you who are on the council.
Time has expired.
My name is not Ms. Cruz.
I'm sorry.
My name is Maria Oceja. I challenge all of you on the council.
Ms. Oceja?
To stand up.
Your, your, your time has expired. Thank you. Our next, our next speaker is Laramie Willer. Ma'am, if you continue that, I will ask for you to be removed. So please, no disruptive activity. Miss, miss. Ma'am. Okay. You know what? Motion to recess.
Do we have any other business?
Ma'am, sorry.
I encourage you all to allow us to vote.
Ma'am.
I would encourage you all to allow us to vote.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Is there any other business to come before this council? Is there any, is there any other business to come before this council? Is there any other business?
Thank you.
And let's go.
Madam, Madam Comptroller, Madam Comptroller.
Call for the vote.
Previous question. I move the previous question.
Please prepare the screens for the vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
No.
I wanted to add the, well.
The question has been called, so all other comments on this item, I have terminated those. So we're going to vote on this. Yes.
A second?
No, it's, it's been moved a second.
So no, okay.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes.
It was there.
Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
From.
Thank you. That item passes. Well, no, we still got, well, no, we still got some stuff. Hold on. We still got a few stuff. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number 39?
Item number 39 is a resolution to amend FY '23 CIP budget by accepting and appropriating additional railroad safety improvement funds from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for railroad safety improvements at various locations. Project number EN 10170. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Engineering Division.
No, she doing the item. She doing the item. Item 39.
Councilman Kovat?
What they doing? They just leaving.
Maybe they gonna go.
And the camera's leaving with them.
What's going on out there?
I apologize I missed the previous items. Vote, please, if it's all possible. If there's no objection, show me as a yes vote. Thank you. Wait. Address the comptroller when she comes back. She stepped away just for a second.
Where is the police?
Madam Comptroller?
They're gonna walk her back in here.
My apologies, but if there is no objection from the body on the previous vote, please show me as voting yes. I apologize, I missed it. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for that. Vice Chair, item number 39.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved it.
39.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee may recommend an approval and I so move.
That item, item number 39 has been moved by Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilman Warren, seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item. Madam Comptroller, please prepare the screens for the vote.
Carlisle, yes. Kovat, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 40?
Item number 40 is a resolution to accept, allocate, and appropriate federal grant funds in the amount of $362,029.35 under A and E and Construction for project number EN 01064, and allocate and appropriate $90,507.34 in geo bonds for a local match under A and E and Construction for a total of $452,536.69 for range line, road, and sidewalk projects. District 7, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by the Engineering Division.
Thank you. Vice Chair Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee may recommend an approval and I so move.
That item has been moved by Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 41?
Item number 41 is a resolution to move $234,480 from CIP project number IS, IS.
Make sure somebody with those.
IS 01080 to CIP project number IT 01003, Operational Infrastructure enhancements. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Information Technology Division.
Thank you. Vice, I'm sorry. Mr. Ford? Okay, that item has been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Here's the vote, council members. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes. Robinson, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 42?
Item number 42 is a resolution to move $11,614 from CIP project number IS 01087 to CIP project number IT 01001, Desktop and Application Infrastructure. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Information Technology Division.
Thank you. Councilman Ford?
Thank you, Chair. Committee may recommend an approval and I so move.
Okay. That item has been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 43?
Item number 43 is a resolution to move $80,325 from CIP project number 1S 0100 to CIP project number IT 01001, Desktop and Application Infrastructure. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Information Technology Division.
Thank you. Councilman Ford?
Thank you, Chair. Committee may recommend an approval and I so move.
Okay. That item has been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes.
Okay. Okay. That's item number 38. Well, no, no. Okay. So we'll, we'll come back to it. So that item, that, the previous item passes. Councilwoman Easter Thomas, you're recognized.
Chair, I'd like to move to reconsider item number 38 to a man.
Second it. Well, electronically, it's not. There is a motion to reconsider. Is there any objection to?
No objection.
Reconsidering item number 38?
No objection.
Okay. That item is up, back open for reconsideration. Councilwoman Easter Thomas? Yes. Okay. Yes. So. Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Okay. Thank you, Chair. In light of, so I did have a chance to actually talk to the family while we were going through the beginning of the comments cards, just to make sure that I confirmed that the request came from the family. We've heard a lot of different acts and things, so I just wanted to make sure it came from the right place. And so after talking with them, and they gave me a brief summary of what they've been doing with their attorney, Ben Crump. They're in New York now and discussing the national implications of that. And so I move to add a clause to the Ordinance 5849. Section 1, it is going to read the Driving Equality Act in honor of Tyree Nichols.
Second.
Second.
Acclamation.
Backclamation.
Backclamation.
Well, yeah. So we're doing a whereas, not section 1. Yeah. So not, it's not, it's a recital, not a section. Yep.
So can you, can you repeat that? Did you get that, Madam Comptroller?
Yes.
As amended by acclamation.
Acclamation with no objection.
I can't even hear. Objection. So there's no objection to that change that was made?
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That item passes. So no, that was, that was special item number 1. Uh. Madam. Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson, do we have any, any comment cards? What? Just the last ones. Okay. We have, colleagues, I have a few general comment cards.
Some people are here for general comments.
So I have a comment card from Mr. Jimmy Franklin. It's Mr. Jimmy Franklin.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. This gentleman was here to speak on item 38.
Okay. What, what's, what's your name, sir? Hold on, one second, miss. Hold, miss, miss, hold on, hold on, hold on, one second. Hold on, one second. But. Did, uh.
What items, what items you pull apart for?
30, 35, 38.
Okay. So, so because we had tabled number 35, so that's, that's up for discussion. And so, yeah. They must be in the cards that I'd already picked up. Name and address for the record, two minutes, sir.
North Main Street.
Go ahead, two minutes.
The ordinance that been passed, I would just talk into the Sarge over there. When y'all pass this tag ordinance, there's gonna be a gang war. And let me explain something. I'm in Frazier every day. I'm in South Memphis. I'm in North Memphis. I'm on the streets of these gangs. The gangs is doing this. They selling tags. That's the reason why y'all can't run the tags. If y'all pass this ordinance, I'm gonna tell you what's gonna happen. Orange Mountain, Whitehaven, Beltline, and New Chicago is gonna merge together because the, the buy here, pay here lots are doing the tags. That's why y'all can't run them. The bumpers doesn't mean anything. What they running is Frazier, South Memphis, and East Memphis is about to merge. They about to be a gang war over the temporary tags. They selling the tags for $1,000 a pop. That's the reason why you can't run the tags. That's the reason why they doing what they do. So if you pass the ordinance, I don't care what name you put on it. It's the gang wars about to happen. I just left Frazier last night. I'm about to hit the Orange Mountain, South Memphis, to calm down. I just talked to Sarge. This has to be done. If y'all pass this, y'all have to put in there that whoever get caught under the age of 18 has to be incarcerated immediately because they the one who's selling the tags. $500 to $1,000 a pop, you can buy a temporary tag right now on the street. Immediately, from any buy here, pay here lot off of Lamar, going across Beltline, going across airways. Real simple. This is the reason why I'm here. I'm not here for a justice cause. I live downtown. I see JB every day. I eat down here. I live down here. I live very well. But when I do go in the community, I tell them, calm down. And they coming downtown. That's why so many breakers downtown, and they trying to figure your guys out down here. So Frazier, North Memphis, South Memphis, and they call Frazier New Jack City now. They come. coming downtown, City Council, and they coming to evade anything below, they coming down here now. They figured it out. They figure out the tourism is the money pot. So they gonna snatch tags off the cars, or best part, they busting the, they busting the windows, they grab the registration, so they could do the plates, so the cops can't run it.
Okay.
Understand this. I'm on the streets. I know exactly what you stop, stop, stop imagining this. That's a great cause, but the real cause is in the streets. And when they come down here, y'all really gonna, I told Paul Young, no more hiding in your office, 'cause they coming. And the criminals already said, listen, we coming downtown, 'cause that's where the money at. Just wanna let you know. Thank you very much.
Uh, general comment cards, Jimmy Franklin.
That's what he said.
Next, we have Barbara Seisak. Okay, and George Boynton.
George is here. Hey, George.
Good afternoon. George Boynton, one four zero eight, South Parkway, East Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one zero six. I am speaking today on behalf of the Tennessee Young Democrats, where I'm Policy Director. I oversee issues advocacy and legislative affairs for our organization. I would like to condemn Republican Memphis Mayor Jim Strickland just one more time for lobbying against the reappointment of Justin Pearson in exchange for Bill Lee's money. There is no amount of money, stadium, budget allocation, otherwise, that takes our right to vote away from us, that takes our democratically elected representation. And since we're on the subject, our Shelby County Young Democrats President, our voice here in Shelby County, Tennessee, for all young Democrats, Amber Sherman, is outside because I don't even know why. And all, several thousand of us, young Democrats statewide, must condemn that action. Article five of NATO is an attack on one is an attack on all. We do consider this an attack. So as young Democrats, we urge the council to rescind the ban and to let any of our members and officers back in and to participate in the democratic process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boynton. Colleagues, that's the last comment card. Mr. Walter Brody? Okay, gotcha. Yeah, well, no, let's hear Mr. Brody first. I'm sorry. Well, no, so if, I cut off all comments about article, item number thirty-eight after the outburst, so we're not hearing any more comments on item number thirty-eight. I know, but the, the actions of one cut it off everybody. Okay, that's, that's fine. Ma'am? Yeah, we're gonna do same nine minutes.
Thank you. Laramie Wheeler, one zero zero one Monticello. Um, I won't speak about the ordinance in particular, 'cause I know that that's not what this is for, um, but I did just wanna say that, it's louder? Okay, I'm gonna microphone. I have been abused by bad leadership, and I've seen bad leadership, and I voted for all the people that represent my district, and, um, I am very grateful that you have passed all the ordinances that we have put in front of you, um, but you're not heroes, and you don't get credit just for doing the right thing and for listening to your constituents. We are very grateful, but all of you voted yes on the Wade ordinance, except for one, Councilwoman Smiley abstained, which is not a no. Councilwoman Easter Thomas, you voted yes, and it was going to preemptively repeal everything we've worked hard to do. So I just wanna ask you to pay attention and listen to your people, not to outside pressures, not to people who don't live here.
Ms. Wheeler, I'm gonna use some personal privilege to interrupt you and correct a misstatement, because like I said the last time, what was up for, the part about repealing that, yes, that was a second vote, but what was up for discussion today was to remove the part that repealed the previous acts.
Which is great.
So.
But all of you voted yes on that second reading.
Yeah.
Um, and so it was on the table today, and if you wanted to do the right thing, I mean, I do wanna celebrate that it passed, and I am grateful, but it could have been done sooner. It could have been done with more integrity. I'm a big advocate for integrity, and I just don't feel that I can trust that you're actually listening to us. Last thing, I voted, I pay my taxes, and, um, I'm a part of y'all salaries, and I deserve to be heard just like everybody else. People are hurting. If you don't address the root cause of the hurt, this will keep happening. Councilman Carlisle, I believe, March twenty-first, you proposed fifteen million dollars to be added to the budget for MPD, and I just wanna say that fifteen million dollars in our community to fix bumpers, to fix lights, to fix tags, you know how many violations would go away? Diversion programs, investing in schools, there's so much more we can do, because if money and policing actually made the city and this country safer, we would be the safest of all time. But we're not, and the problem continues to get worse because people need, and if we don't help fill that need, they will continue to need.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Wheeler. Vice Chair Smiley?
Absolutely. Same nine minutes?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's been a doozy. Same nine minutes, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four, and I saw move.
Okay. Uh, same nine minutes have been moved electronically by Councilman Smiley, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the items for the vote? And.
Carlisle, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Jones, yes. Here are some additional members. Logan, yes. And Swearengen Washington, yes. And Robinson, yes. So everybody seated, yes.
That item passes. So I have two comment cards, one for Lisa Bennett, and then the second one from Theron Bond, and then we'll hear from you, Mr. Brody.
I've done all the radio shows. I've done K-Well.
Good evening. My name is Lisa D. Bennett. My address is forty-three twenty-one, Royal Palace Code, and I'm sure most of you recognize me. I am a, uh, community member of the Redistricting Committee, representing District One. And I really had not intended to say anything this evening, because I know that the ordinances regarding police reform would probably take the majority of the time, and that's a very sexy topic. It, it's appealing to spend a lot of time on that, and it's necessary. However, I think we've been very quiet about the importance and the significance of the work that is done and is supposed to be done with the Redistricting Committee. This has been a historic opportunity for us to really dig into the data, to look at what voting is going to look like for the city of Memphis for the next ten years. And I just want to be on public record to say that I have both been elated and very disappointed as a community member on the Redistricting Committee. I've been elated because I've seen community members make some genuine efforts to make sure that we are informed, that we know what we're doing and why we're doing it. But I've been disappointed because my fellow community, uh, committee members, particularly council members, have not seen it to be important to attend meetings. However, those same people have made sure to stall, to make sure that things don't move forward in a timely manner, to make sure that we don't have the information that we need to make good decisions on behalf of the citizens of Memphis. I don't understand why people aren't, council members aren't attending these meetings, but then when it comes to the eleventh hour, people have things to say that, to me, stall the process. I don't understand that. I think there's been a lot of selfish input that leaves out the needs of the majority of Memphians, even looking at the, uh, Assembly of the Community Members on the committee. They are, we are not representative of the majority of Memphis. I have three degrees, a bachelor's, a master's, and an EDS, and several of the committee members hold PhDs. There are professors at universities, some doctors of ministry, what have you. That is not the norm, the average of Memphis. So I'm just concerned, and I'm asking you all, because I know that we're still going forward with this, stop thinking about your district, because I keep hearing you all say my district. It's not your district. It's the district that you represent. It's not your district. So stop looking at these maps as what's gonna be best for your interests and the people in your district. This is about the city of Memphis for the next ten years, and I need you all to be more involved, more engaged than the community members who have put in work for these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your service on that committee, Ms. Bennett. Ms. Theron Bond?
Theron T. Bond, fifty-seven North Somerville Street, Memphis three eight one oh four. It's ironic that I'm standing here today. Some of you all were members of the City Council when I was banned several years ago. So this should stand as evidence that when we ban people from participating in these very public procedures, that we don't come back five times harder, ten times harder, twenty times harder, we come back one hundredfold, and we are not playing. We are your voters, we are your constituents, and now we are silencing voices. We're banning books in this state, we're banning education in this state, we're preventing folks from getting public dollars, we're silencing the voices of elected officials, we're silencing the voices of constituents. What message does this send when we say we are different from Tennessee Republicans, when our very own Democratic colleagues are doing the very same thing right here in the largest county in our state, in the largest tax base in our state, a state that you cannot win over unless you have every single person in the city and county accounted for? We're also in twenty-twenty-three. That is the election year for some, the reelection year for others, and some of you all may go on to better things, but I want you all to take away that you all were not in these seats one hundred percent of the time. You were one of us, and if you silence our voices now, imagine what that would look like if you silenced your voters come October twenty-twenty-three and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bond. Mr. Walter Brody?
Good evening. My name is Walter Brody. I stay forty-two fifty-six, LeBelle Coe, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one oh nine. Let's go in the prayer. Having to follow, I wanna thank you once again for allowing me to come here, Father God. Continue to bless all the City Council members, everybody who's working under them, who's working real hard, Father God. Continue to bless all the policemen, Father God, who's working hard. Father God, continue to bless our mayor, both our mayors, Sheriff County Commission, Father God. Father God, continue to bless our president, our vice president, every Republican, Democrat, independent. Father God, bless the city, Father God. Bless everybody who's came here today, Father God. Father God, I command the Holy Spirit, the Holy Ghost on thy spirit, to calm thy spirit, Father God. Satan, the Lord, rebuke you off this house, off all the leaders, Father God, and give him wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Satan, you have no place here. Father God, we thank you for everything. Bless the city, this state, this country, and all around the world. Clains us, give us peace and rest in our soul, grace and mercy, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.